Hi, it's June 26.
This call is now being recorded.
I'd like to thank Corian for joining us. We have a quorum and we can begin. In conformity with the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 17, 2020, and due to concerns over COVID-19, this L.A. City Council Committee meeting will be conducted telephonically. The audio for this meeting is broadcast live on the Internet at LAXity.org. The live audio...
(phone ringing)
I'm on. Sorry. Full disclosure, I've got two teenagers and two dons here. Thanks, Paul. The audio for this meeting is broadcast live on the Internet at LAXity.org. The live audio can also be heard by calling 213-621-CI-TY. And members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on today's agenda should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1606553266 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID, which once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. With that, I'd like to turn to public comment. Dennis Gleason, my legislative director, will cue our members of the public who'd like to speak. Remind yourselves that you have one minute to speak for a single item and two minutes to speak on multiple items. So with that, Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
Counselors, good afternoon. Mr. John White, City Clerk's office. Before beginning public comment, want to take roll to make sure we have a quorum?
Please do.
Mr. Busciano.
Here.
Mr. Bonin.
Not yet.
And Mr. Corcoran.
Here.
A quorum is present. You may begin your public comments, sir.
Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. We have no callers waiting for public comment.
Very good. With that, Mr. Corcoran, unless you want to hold any of these items on the desk, I'd like to call items 6 through 17 on consent. Okay, hearing none. I'd like to move items 6 through...
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move items 6 through 17 on consent. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Busciano.
Well, we actually have, I believe, I want to include the CIO reports transmitted to the city's clerk office for items 15 and 16.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll begin the roll call vote for items 6 through 17. Councilmember Busciano.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonin. Absent. And Councilmember Corcoran.
Aye.
Two ayes. Approval for 6 through 17 passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With that, Mr. Corcoran, I'd like to take items 1 through 3 together. These are Board of Airport Commission and Harbor Commission reappointments, which I will call for approval. Really appreciate the dedicated service of our three reappointments before us. Before we take a vote, I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners would like to speak. Let's see. I know Mr. Perozzi has some audio issues.
I'm clear now, if you can hear me, councilman.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. I don't know if it's Sean Burton...
Go ahead, Nick.
Okay. A couple of points. First of all, I want to thank all the council members for all their hard work and dedication in this vital crisis of COVID-19. You know, I've been here for about a year and a half, a little bit longer, and the Law Walk team is a family. It is an unbelievable group of folks. I had no idea that I'd be joining not only a BOAC board that was spectacular, but a family of dedicated folks that I've never seen in my practice of 30-plus years. I know it's trying to say that it's an honor to serve the great city of Los Angeles, and it's trying to say that I worked with the great city council and the great mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti, but I say it honestly with the utmost sincerity. I want to acknowledge everyone that, thank everyone for not only their dedication, leadership, but their commitment, and to especially thank each and every Law Walk employee who welcomed me into the Law Walk family and made my job so easy and got me up to speed. So I'm super excited about the opportunity to be in here another five years, and hopefully we see LAX to be known as the beacon of airports, not only in Los Angeles, but honestly, honestly, the world. And having said my thank yous, I also wanted to acknowledge and support Justin Urbachi. He is, without a doubt, the right choice at the right time to do this job. You know, I was new on the board, but the BOAC colleagues chuckled shortly after Justin was appointed the interim CEO, inherited 14 billion of massive construction projects and then the COVID crisis. And people were saying to him, "Are you sure you want this job?" That, as we all know, starts at the top, but man, Justin's leadership has been flat-out A++. He's calm, he's thoughtful, he's always accessible, he's laser-focused in doing the right thing for the city of L.A., for Law Walk, for LAX, and he's so supportive of everybody who works in Law Walk. So on a personal level, Justin was always the person who said, "Hey, how can I help and what can I do to make LAX the best experience for everyone?" So not only do I support Justin being the permanent CEO of Law Walk, as no one is more deserving, but he is who we need for the job right now. Right now. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Roxborough. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Mr. Burton, Mr. Perozzi, open the floor. I'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Burton. May I get a second?
Yes, slide up there.
Great, thank you very much. So I just want to thank you for inviting me here today and for considering my reappointment to the board. I also want to thank Mayor Garcetti for reappointing me and for entrusting me and the other board members with overseeing implementation of his vision for Law Walk, which manages both LAX and Van Nuys. In 2013, I served as president of the board, which is a governing body of one of the city of Los Angeles' largest agencies and the world's now third busiest airport. I've had the pleasure of working closely now with three different chief executive officers, including Mr. Urbachi and my fellow commissioners, to ensure responsible governance and oversight of Law Walk. I am incredibly proud of all that we have accomplished during this time. With the support of this committee and the council, we have signed contracts for and broken ground on various elements of the largest public works project in the history of Los Angeles, and I would argue the largest airport capital improvement program in the nation. And just as important as the scope of these projects is how we are doing them, with innovative financing, strong commitments to employing local businesses and workers, and a clear eye for building sustainably and in accord with our neighbors. And this year, again, we did not know we would have to make very difficult decisions regarding our budget, while simultaneously ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of our staff and employees and continuing our ambitious modernization program. Yet our board and airport management are bracing to the challenge, passing a responsible budget for these times, and continuing to reimagine the LAX experience from curb to gate. I am honored to serve the city of Los Angeles and Law Walk. My focus will remain ensuring that our board and the Law Walk management team is being thoughtful about our finances, creative and forward-thinking about our operations and guest experience, and that we continue to focus on inclusivity in our workforce. As we stood together in the past at groundbreaking events, most recently the ICF West, I look forward to standing together with both of you at ribbon-cutting on new world-class facilities. Thank you again for your consideration of my appointment and the opportunity to continue to serve our city. I also am available to answer any questions. I do have some comments about Mr. Urbachi, but I will wait until his formal approval.
Thank you, President Burton. Appreciate your commitment to service of our airport and our city. Thank you. Commissioner Perozzi?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Busciano, all of everybody who is on today. It's hard to believe that it's been seven years already since I've been serving on the Board of Harbor Commissioners. It's been an honor, it's been a pleasure. I've had great colleagues, you know, and I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say I miss my colleague Dave Ariyan, who's a good friend, and I miss him to this day, but he left us with a lot of knowledge, a lot of guidance, and we always hear his voice as we're making decisions. So with that, I want to just say again what an honor it's been to be serving at the port. You know, it's my hometown of San Pedro, I'm only a couple miles from the Harbor Commission office there, so it's just an honor. So one of the things I'm, you know, most proud of working with the commission has been our community investment, in particular in San Pedro and Wilmington on our waterfront development projects. As many of you know, we've broken ground on a few projects. The San Pedro Public Market Promenade Town Square and the Wilmington Waterfront Promenade continues to move forward through the development process. Recently, there was a ceremony where we started taking down the DWP tanks, which has been a big push. To thank the city for that push, the mayor, the councilmen, and the whole council folks there in City Hall, we appreciate all the support we're getting. And just to put some numbers on the investment locally, you know, it's over $100 million plus just in the most recent investments that we're putting in into the waterfront development, but over, I think it's been half a billion over the last 10, 15 years. The other thing we do is we outreach to the community a lot with our kids, everything from our local schools, we give free tours, we have our Port Community Investment Program with $7 million in grants being made, you know, all the way through the coming fiscal year since 2013. We've done some other things as well to remain number one port here. We've also refinanced a lot of our debt and burning that down, and that's a big deal. And now we go through the challenges of these, you know, trade deals, impacts there, COVID-19, but we have a great team led by our President, President Lee and Vice President Renwick, and we're going to get through this together and still remain number one. So again, I want to thank you for considering me once again for another term, and appreciate again consideration of being reappointed for another five years. Thank you so much for your confidence.
Thank you, Commissioner Perozzi, Commissioners Roxborough, and President Burton for, again, the steadfast commitment, leadership to our city and the proprietary departments, which really focus on a lot of jobs program, as we all know. One in nine jobs in our region are impacted by the ports and airports and tourism, and I want to thank you again for saying yes again. Thank the mayor for moving these recommendations. And I know I speak on behalf of Councilmember Bonin, he's pushing the airport and his colleagues to ensure that Law Walk is a first-class neighbor of world-class airport. Did I get that right? Okay. And clearly, if you look at the infrastructure work that's being done, another jobs program in creating a world-class airport, I've been really proud of your leadership to both commissioners. And to Anthony, thank you so much for moving on our vision and the mayor's vision on ensuring that we remain competitive in moving the goods in and out of our port complex, but also being a good neighbor, as we've seen Law Walk move in this waterfront development and bringing retail dining, entertainment, infrastructure that has clearly sparked the interest of private investment in housing and retail and restaurants coming in. And I do know that both the airport and port, in response to COVID-19, have taken a financial hit, but I believe, as the mayor indicates and states, we're going to come out of this day stronger and more innovative. So thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Any comments on the reappointments before us?
I only want to comment about how strongly I support them. I have no questions because I've had the pleasure of being able to work with and observe the work of each of these gentlemen, see the commitment that they've brought to their task, and the deep level of substantive expertise and real-world skills that each of them brings to this really, these two really challenging commissions. And I just am very, very grateful to each of you for your willingness to continue to do this very challenging work, especially at this most challenging of times, on behalf of the people of Las Angeles. So happy to move each of the reappointments.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. So with that, we have a motion to approve items 1 through 3 on the reappointments of the commissioners. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, councilmembers, approving items 1 through 3. Councilmember Busciano.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonin. Councilmember Corcoran.
Aye.
Two ayes. Approval of 1, 2, and 3 pass.
Thank you so much. So with that, let's take item number 4. Item 4 is now before us. Mr. Clerk, do you want to read item 4 on the record?
Yes, sir. Item 4. Board of Airport Commissioners Report and Resolution Relative to Departement of Mr. Justin Urbachi as General Manager and Chief Executive Officer of the Department of Los Angeles World Airports.
Mr. Urbachi, this is the last call. Are you sure you want to do this? I'm excited about this. We've worked at these labs several months, and the fact that you have that knowledge, the skill set, the ability to lead one of the country's finest airports in light of the infrastructure work that was spoken about in the previous items by our two commissioners, you have the, you know, you know the airport very well, serving as a chief innovation and technology officer. You also know the airline business, the industry, very well, as serving as Vice President for Star Alliance, which is a global airline network, and has past experience in working for airline companies and aviation consulting firms. You are the right fit, I believe. I really appreciate the commission, the taking on this role in national search, and really proud of this recommendation moving forward. Mr. Corcoran, I'll turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
I guess the only question, it's not so much a question as a comment, and that is, we have one of the biggest, most important airports on planet Earth in LAX, and we also have, under Law Walk's control, a much smaller airport in the San Fernando Valley, which I would just ask Mr. Urbachi to continue to work closely with the community to address the concerns about noise and other considerations that we have at Van Nuys Airport as well, but affected almost 2 million people in the San Fernando Valley. I couldn't pass up the opportunity to say that, but with that, I just, I'm enthusiastically supporting this permanent appointment, and I want to congratulate and thank Mr. Urbachi for willing to step up and lead this great airport into the future. So I'm happy to move the item if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. At which point, allow me to have Mr. Urbachi say a few words in front of the committee.
And then, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a word on Mr. Urbachi before his speech. Is that possible, sir?
Go ahead, President Burton. Before he goes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I just want to share my strong support. I had the privilege of leading the search committee. We put together a search committee of six professionals. We hired a search firm. We gave a national search, looking at the best airports in the U.S. and the best directors, and, you know, what we had been looking for has been talked about all along, in Mr. Urbachi. And so I just want to share my strong support and the board of the Board of Airport Commissioners who voted unanimously for his firm's appointment at the search committee. I have had the privilege of working out with three different CEOs. I have probably worked more with Kelvin in the past six months than any of the others, to the point where the first few months of this crisis, we had a standing call. We couldn't do it until 6 o'clock in the evening, because Mr. Urbachi was so busy, you know, putting out fires, but he is, but unbelievable during his time, and he has a lot of focus on the team. He's had data communication to Law Walk 3,700 members to keep them informed and to stay in contact about what they see or what they were concerned about. He has kept our modernization program on track. He has worked diligently to cut our burden appropriately so that we will be responsible in how we manage the physical affairs of Law Walk. And the bridge's side has been just perfect. So I just want to, before we speak, to thank him for his willingness to continue in this role and to help, you know, make LAX the world's best airport. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, President Burton. I know Commissioner Roxborough said some kind words in his remarks. Do you want to add anything, sir?
Sorry. No, I just echoed, and, you know, he is such a special guy to this airport, and President Burton and this CEO to be, have done a phenomenal job. I mean, tireless work, and I think President Burton's really understating how hard he's worked here with Justin as well. And they are just a phenomenal dynamic duo for the airport. So I wanted to add a thank you to President Burton, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, Mr. Urbachi, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm willing to say something because I'll jinx it, but...
But I really want to thank you, Chairman Busciano, and Councilmember Corcoran for giving
me the invitation to join you here today and for your consideration of my appointment. And, you know, really want to thank you both for your continued focus and passion for supporting trade tourism and travel and your very strong support and ongoing of our airports. It's very, very much appreciated. And of course, I want to thank Mayor Garcetti for putting my name forward for this appointment. It's really an honor to serve the mayor and to carry out his vision for the future of our airports. And I'm just really extremely pleased to have both President Burton and Commissioner Roxborough here today, and I can't thank them enough for their kind words, but more importantly, I can't thank them enough for the support that they provided me in my tenure here as interim. They were always there to provide any input and assistance and anything we needed to do wherever they had expertise and experience. Especially want to commend President Burton. Commissioner Roxborough was very accurate in saying that he understated his commitment and contributions to me and this airport during the COVID crisis. He, you know, really graciously provided all kinds of time while he was, at the same time, trying to get his company through this COVID crisis as well. So he was really overburdened with dealing with his company, trying to get that through, and he still had the time to meet with me, at least on a daily basis, to help us address the key things that we needed to do at this airport. It was so fluid that it needed daily attention, he was there to provide his support, his leadership, and I'm very, very grateful to him for that, and the city of Los Angeles should be as well. I'm very, extremely humbled and honored to be given the opportunity to continue to do the work of leading our airports. I'm also very privileged to serve Law Walk and the city of Los Angeles during this very pivotal time in the city's and our airport's history. But really, this appointment is really a testament to our entire Law Walk team and to the work that they all did collectively to respond to the challenges of the past few months. And it really in recognition of their passion, their dedication, their hard work, their creativity and flexibility, which allowed us to continue to transform our airports while providing a safe, secure, and exceptional guest experience and meeting the demands that this COVID crisis brought to us. You know, as we all know, the past few months were not what we expected, 2020 to be. When I first started this interim role, I had kind of a different hope for what the six months would bring, but, you know, we had to deal with it, and I think that they're very proud of our Board of Airport Commissioners and of our team and the way we've handled it and where we brought ourselves right now. I just want to say that, you know, if confirmed, I will continue to follow some key principles in leading our airports, and that is continuity, ingenuity, community, sustainability, mobility, and inclusivity. Let me, if you will, just elaborate on those. Continuity in the sense that we have a very, very ambitious strategic plan and capital improvement program, and we need to continue and remain focused on those. We're in the middle of delivering these projects, and we need to remain focused on doing that. We need to avoid unnecessary additional disruption, and we need to take advantage of this crisis to put ourselves on the right foot there. At the same time, we have to have some ingenuity. We need to make sure that we are reimagining key aspects of our operations, and we need to continue to think innovatively in everything we do, especially as we're defining and implementing this new post-COVID norm. That includes things of innovative development and commercial strategies, digitization of our ports, improved passenger processing, and looking for new ways to generate revenue. Councilmember Corcoran, you rightly pointed out, community and working with our neighbors. So it is very critical and a very, very high priority for us that we further develop and strengthen the relationships and the collaboration with the surrounding neighborhoods and all the airport stakeholders through close and frequent communications and partnerships. And yes, the Van Nuys is also, that community is very important to us as well, and we'll continue to work hard with them, just as we do for all the communities around here. Sustainability is also very important. We will continue to champion policies to push the envelope in sustainability, including such initiatives as involving electric vehicles and facilities, lowering of greenhouse gases, looking for alternative power sources, and looking how we will make power more resilient here. On the mobility side, we need to continue to develop alternatives to driving to the airport. The APM will bring us there, our people mover will be a big aspect of that, but we also need to look at other tools, such as microtransit solutions for employees and guests, public transportation, how do we collaborate with other municipalities and agencies such as LEDOT, Metro, to provide different ways for people to access our airport. And then, a very important aspect that I'm very committed to is inclusivity. And we'll continue to focus to ensure that we have equitable participation in Law Walk employment and contracts from all demographic groups in a manner that's very representative of the population of L.A., and to ensure that we have participation from these groups and companies who might otherwise be excluded or marginalized. These are areas where we continue to focus. I want to thank you again for your consideration of my appointment, and I really look forward to continued collaboration as we continue to reimagine and reform airports in both ends of the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Urbachi. Thank you so much, Mr. Urbachi. Keep the comments. And with that, looking forward to your continued partnership with the city council, along with, of course, with the mayor's office and moving this airport and extending what we've seen in this infrastructure project in light of what's going to come to us with the Olympics and, of course, major events throughout this region. Thank you so much for your commitment. We have a motion, Mr. Corcoran, to approve this appointment, and with that, Mr. Kirk, can you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Busciano.
Aye.
Mr. Bonin. And Mr. Corcoran.
Aye.
Two votes yes, the matter approves.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, Mr. Urbachi. Welcome. Congratulations. We'll send this to council right away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our final item will be on item number 5. If you can, Mr. Kirk, read that item into the record, please.
Item 5 is a CIO report relative to a Department of Convention and Tourism Development Agreement with the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board to promote Los Angeles as a destination for conventions and leisure travel for the term July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2030, and for compensation in the amount of 1/14th of the annual amount of transient occupancy tax collected by the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before us, we have General Manager of our Department of Convention and Tourism Development Before us, we have General Manager of our Department of Convention and Tourism Development, along with members of the L.A. Tourism Convention Bureau. So, Mr. Don Liu, General Manager of the CTD, I'll turn it over to you to kick this off.
Thank you, Councilman, and appreciate the opportunity to address your committee today. This is a semi-regular renewal of the contract with L.A. Tourism and Convention Board, which is, as you know, a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization formed in the late 70s at the request of the city of Los Angeles to market and promote convention business and tourism for the city of Los Angeles. The terms of the contract are essentially the same as before. The notable difference is an extension of the term. Normally, the contracts run five years. We've requested that this contract go for 10 years. Happy to answer any questions. I also am pleased that Adam Burke, soon-to-be Acting CEO of L.A. Tourism, and Patty McGenett, Senior Vice President of Business Affairs, are both on the line. We are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Have you read them?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So I'm happy we're moving, Mr. Kukorian, on a 10-year plan. It's going to fall, of course, the Super Bowl, the World Cup, as well, of course, is in preparation for the summer and Paralympic Games in 2028. I think this is the right move moving forward. I wanted to, if you look at, we're setting aside 15% or L.A. TCB's setting aside 15% of their annual funding for a reserve fund, and the proposed agreement increases the ceiling of the reserve fund to $5 million, which will allow L.A. TCB to more flexibility and budgeting and resilience against economic shocks, which is what we're experiencing right now. So I'm happy to move this, and unless, Mr. Kukorian?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, just, I have kind of a 30,000-foot question, if you will. Because this is a 10-year agreement, we have to look forward and try to predict how we're going to be marketing tourism and conventions in this city at a time that is very difficult to envision right now. And for the last 10 years, as we've talked about replacing the convention center, one of the questions that poor Don Liu has heard me asked probably, you know, 1,000 times is, is there a place for conventions as we know them in the future at a time of instant global communication and, you know, remote presence? Is there still a traditional, a role for traditional conventions? And what does that look like? And I think that applies both to convention bookings, but also right now to tourism more generally as well, given all that we're experiencing right now with the pandemic and so forth. So, I'd like any of you who would like to respond to that to talk a little bit about what does the future hold for conventions? How are we preparing for it? And what sorts of different ways of outside-of-the-box thinking are we going to have to apply to marketing tourism in this day and age?
Before I answer that, if I can, Mr. Kukorian, thank you so much for that question. Just know we're going to have our folks, I'll be calling Mr. Urbachi to come back to the committee, as well as Mr. Liu in L.A. TCB, to report to this committee on the impacts and step, moving forward on the next steps in regarding, in regards to COVID-19. Go ahead, go ahead, Don.
Happy to do that at a future meeting, but to answer your question, Councilman, I would argue that not only are conventions going to be important in the future, but maybe even more so. I'm sure, like many, you've all experienced this Zoom fatigue that we're having, and I think there'll be a pent-up demand and an intense desire to meet in person again. You know, the convention business that we go after is, are large citywide events that rotate locations around the country and sometimes around the world. These are annual opportunities for industries and associations and even corporations themselves to meet, maybe the only time each year, face-to-face. And the general sentiment in our industry is not only will conventions remain important, but they may be even more important. As to your question about what kind of innovative things are we thinking about doing and what changes are going to be made here in Los Angeles, we are seriously looking at more and more opportunities for outdoor or combination outdoor space. We are, in our expansion and modernization project, already planning on doing a huge remodel of Gilbert Lindsay Plaza, which is outside of the convention center, but not only to turn that into a public park that will serve the South Park neighborhood, but also be an exceptional, unusual place for meeting, meetings and conventions. And that's the competitive advantage that we'll have because of our weather over places like Chicago and New York and even Las Vegas weather heat. We're looking at rooftop locations in our new building and other terraces, and so we think that our future design will be, post-pandemic response will be to add as much outdoor space and outdoor programming as possible. In addition, you know, in the short term, we think there'll be some hybrid events. We have a great technology platform currently at the convention center, and so we do have the ability currently to do events that might have half of the normal attendance combined with another, usually more than half, of people that can tune in online. And so, we are working with meeting planners for future events, at least in the near term, to not only host them as we normally would, but to include a technology online portion as well. Adam and Patty, if you want to add anything, I'm happy to yield the floor to you.
Thanks, Don. So, Councilman Kukorian, I appreciate the question, and I would echo Don's sentiments. I think there are two important things. First of all, we're very much driven by data and by the voice of the customer, so we have been actively engaging our customer advisory board, which consists of some of the largest event planners in the country, to talk to them about what do they expect both during and post-pandemic, and the data very much supports what Don just described. They do not envision a future without these large gatherings, particularly since, once there is a vaccine and effective therapeutics, they intend to continue those large events. As Don said, for a lot of our larger association clients, it is the one-time annually that they do come together as a group. Beyond that, we're already seeing some promising signs. We also rely greatly on third-party data from the group and event part of the business, and even as recently as this past week, we received something from North Star Meetings that showed while certainly the remainder of 2020 is going to be challenging, most of the large and even smaller event planners do anticipate booking new business as early as the first quarter of next year. So I think, as Don said, that the most important thing about this sector for us is the economic impact of these citywide conventions is significant, particularly not just for the area around the convention center, but it creates compression, and we actually get a lot more visitation in all of the surrounding areas. And I think the last thing I'd add is, we actually find that the convention business is a tremendous driver for individual leisure travel, because we have a lot of people who may visit Los Angeles through a convention who might not have previously considered us for leisure, and our goal is always to drive a high likelihood to recommend the destination and return intent. So in fact, the convention business actually supports the individual leisure business as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, you want to add anything, or you're done?
You know, I usually do. In this case, our CEO said it very well, and one of the things, too, that, you know, we know that the conventions will look differently, but it's very positive what we're seeing on the meeting planner sentiment, and we are also seeing that on the consumer sentiment as well. We know it will be an extended process. We're looking at doing, rolling it out, so in waves, and we'll come back to you and talk to you a little bit more about that, but we will be initially looking at staycations, really talking to Angelinos to have them support Los Angeles, help put people back to their jobs, and so we will be talking to our own Angelinos, our own community, and then we will move to more of the drive market, then on to the more short-haul market, and this is again, as things progress, and then the long-haul domestic market, and we do know that international will take a while to come back, which is, again, why having the traditional runway. I think it's going to be so important. But we welcome coming back and giving you a little more information about our recovery plan when you wish.
Thank you for that. Thanks, Patty. Yeah, we'll be introducing a motion, and hopefully upon return from our recess, we'll have presentations before this committee. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number five.
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and now, second thought, roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Buscagino.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonin. And Councilmember Kukorian.
Aye.
The contract approves.
Thank you.
That completes your agenda, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate this. This is, this is our first T3 virtual meeting, and we got it done. So thank you all for joining us, to our commissioners, to Justin and Mr. Liu. Thank you so much, Mr. Kukorian. Appreciate you all joining us, and we got it done. We're now adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a-
Congratulations, everyone. Have a great report to the committee.
Thank you very much. Sean.
Thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.
Great job. Special thanks to our clerk, CLA, city attorney, CAO, and staff from CD2 and CD11. Appreciate you guys. Have a wonderful summer recess. We will see you all in August. Take care.
Thanks, Dennis. Goodbye.